Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We'd like to go ahead and welcome everyone to our city of Palaca, September 10th, 2020, virtual meeting pursuant to Governor DeSantis's executive order number 20-69. At this time, we're going to call the meeting to order. And we're going to have Commissioner Borum, if you could lead us in the pledge and the invocation. We would just ask everyone to go ahead and stand in their respective places.
Bow your hands, please. The Lord bless us this day. Thank you for having us come before the commission to do your will. We ask these things in Jesus's name to protect each and every citizen and give us the knowledge, wisdom, and guidance that we need in order to make the best decisions for our community. We ask these things in Jesus's name, we pray. Amen. Join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Borum. We're also going to have a moment of silence at this time in memory of those who lost their life during 9/11 on September 11, 2001. And also for Mr. Steve Sheridan, I'm going to share a little bit about Mr. Steve Sheridan before we have a moment of silence. In memory of Steve Sheridan, Steve was one of our was one of my black members were airport best friends. He passed away Sunday morning, August 30th, with friends and family around him. He started coming out to the airport as a child in the 1950s when his father would bring him out to go flying and work on airplanes. He got hooked as a young, at a young age, and his love for flying never diminished. He came out to the airport almost every day. You could say he's an ambassador for our airport and for the city of Palaca. He rarely missed the opportunity to visit people and talk about the airplanes and flying. He's one of the kindest men in the entire city of Palaca, friendly to everyone that he met. Steve was one of the kindest men in the entire city of Palaca and will be missed terribly by anyone who was fortunate enough to know him. Godspeed, Steve Sheridan. This came from John Yu, our airport manager. So as we go into tomorrow, again, remembering those who died during the horrific events that took place during September 11th. We want to make sure that we continue to say prayers for our first responders, continue to say prayers for all those individuals who lost their lives during these terrorist attacks. And we want to make sure that we continue to pray for this community and for our country so that we can all stand in unity and on common ground. And so at this time, we're just going to ask everyone to just bow their heads for a moment of silence wherever you are at this time. Thank you. Roll call, please. Commissioner Borum. Mr. Campbell. Mr. McCauskill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown. Terrell Hill is here. All members of President accountable, we have a quorum. Moving on, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner McCauskill. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on into our public recognition and presentations. The first one up is Patriot Day. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas on September 11, 2001, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in nation's history with outrage and bravery. And whereas the lives of 2,977 innocent victims were mercifully cut short by terrorists driven by hatred and destruction. And whereas in response to the tragedy, Americans across the country came together, remarkable spirit of devotion and unity and carried out the countless acts of kindness. And whereas September 11th is the day to honor the memory of those who've lost their lives and those who united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. And whereas on October 25th, 2001, the United States Congress passed Joint Resolution 71 by a vote of 407 to 0, directing the president to designate September 11th of each year as Patriot Day. And whereas September 11th is observed and recognized as the annual national day of service and remembrance. And whereas on September 11th, on the days leading up to the following this day, citizens have an opportunity to participate in activities that honor 9/11 victims and heroes by joining together. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby recognize September 11th, 2020 as Patriot Day. In the city of Palaca, we encourage local government officials and leaders of civic, social, educational organizations and citizens to reflect on the importance of active citizenship, recognize the enduring strength of our constitution, and reaffirm our commitment to the rights and obligations of citizenship in this great nation. And witness, we're over here to set my hand and cause to be a fix to seal the city of Palaca, Florida, on this 10th day of September, the year by Lord, 2020. I'll entertain a motion.
Tell me, second.
Or the second, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Again, let's give a cyber round of applause for Patriot Day. And let's make sure that we honor all those, our first responders and those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice in order to protect us on tomorrow and every day throughout. Our next proclamation. It's Constitution Week. Constitution Week is September 17th through 23rd, 2020. And this is for the William Bartram chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Do we have any DAR members on our who are present on our Zoom? This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas on May of 1787, delegates gathered in the Pennsylvania State House to chart a new course of our emerging country, meeting at a time of economic hardship and passionate debate, but with the understanding that while controversy is a hallmark of democracy, the forces of tension and uncertainty pale in comparison to the strength of our common ideals. I'll read that again. The forces of tension and uncertainty pale in comparison to the strength of our common ideals. And whereas in the document that has endured more than two and a quarter centuries, framers put forth their vision for a more perfect union and called it the Constitution of the United States of America. And whereas the constitution was signed on September 17th, 1787, and after an extended period of national conversation with the promise of a bill of rights. and after an extended period of national conversation with the promise of a bill of rights, it became the supreme law of the land. Since that time, America's constitution has inspired nations to demand control of their own destinies and have called multitudes to seek freedom and prosperity on our shores. And whereas as we celebrate the world's longest surviving written charter of government, let us remember that upholding our founding principles requires us to challenge modern injustices while accepting our responsibilities as citizens, our obligations to one another and to future generations, allowing us to move forward, knowing that in the face of impossible odds, those who love their country can change it. And whereas Constitution Week designated by Joint Resolution of Congress as September 17th through 23rd of each year was initiated by the Daughters of the American Revolution in 1955 and signed into law in 1956 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower, becoming public law number 915 of the United States of America. Now therefore, I Tarrell Hill, together with the members of the city commission, do hereby recognize and proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week in the city of Palaca, Florida. And we encourage local government officials and leaders of civic, social, educational organizations to conduct ceremonies and programs that bring together community members to reflect on the importance of active citizenship, recognize the enduring strength of our constitution, and reaffirm our commitment to the rights and obligations of citizens in this great nation. And witness, where I've here and to cause my hand to be affixed to seal the city of Palaca, Florida on this 10th day of September in the year by Lord 2020, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
For the second, all in favor, say aye. Carries unanimously. Now we've got a special recognition again, and this is one that I would love to share with Vice Mayor Brown. I'm going to have you do the honors of recognizing someone better known as Madea.
Well, this is a jewel of the city of Palaca. My dear has been here with us and taking care of us and telling us what to do with no uncertain terms for 100 years.
We can hear. We can hear.
And we're very happy to know that she made it 100. We have a plaque for her that's being presented to Ms. Annie Lee Williams, better known as Muddear, for the Palacas International Club. Happy, okay. I got to read it. Happy 100th birthday, August the 27th, 2020. We love you so much, my dear, and you have been a beacon, a light in our paths. Even at me being the oldest member. I grew up as a kid in your yard with your daughter Dorothy and Pearly, mainly. And all of us have been touched by you and the love that you have given us. And you did not give restrained love. You gave that love that if we were wrong, we got to call. We love you. We thank you for all your loving kindness and for being here with us. We hope you have many more birthdays. This city commission, mayor and city commission wish to wish you the happiest of birthdays.
So I got an opportunity during her birthday week to get a chance to celebrate with the family on a Zoom call. And anytime, I can tell you, Ms. Annie Lee Williams, Madea, is by far one of the sharpest individuals
My sound gone down.
you will ever find. She gave a message that's second to none. It's been recorded and memorialized. And she is one who loves her community. She loves her church over at Cabbie Missionary Baptist Church. And everyone that she's had her hand on is a shining example of what community should be. And we just want to say to you again that we are just elated to get an opportunity to celebrate 100 years with you. And we are, and you are the newest member to the Palaca Century Club. For those of you who are out in this community, if you know of any other individuals who are part of the Century Club, let us know so that we can recognize and celebrate them properly every day and every year. And again, we just want to thank you. Next, we're going to move into public comments on item number two. Our public comments. No actually, we take it on topics of discussion. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, you can dial 386-329-0100, or you can put your comment inside of the chat on our Facebook Live or our YouTube. So again, it's 386-329-0100. We're now open for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment. Do we have anything in the chat? Seeing nothing, we'll move on. To item number three of the agenda, which is presentation and acceptance of our fiscal year 2018-19 audit comprehensive annual financial report. It's our caffer, April Shuping of CRI.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners for having us. We have presented the, on June 29th, we issued the audit report on your 2019 caffer. You should have copies of it all in your packets. The great news is it was an unmodified opinion. We had no findings related to your single audit, that your federal and state grant money, that's so important that we keep that nice and clean and tidy. So that was very good news. We still had a couple of internal control findings. It's much reduced from the prior year. I think your finance and management team is doing a great job strengthening those internal controls year over year. And so we have worked very closely with them on some recommendations, ways to improve it. The primary adjustments we had this year were related to year end clothes. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board likes to give new and esoteric requirements every year that are hard to keep up with if that's not your primary interest in life. And so we did have to help out a little bit with that. And then really just making sure that your grant schedule was complete and accurate. And there was just one missing one, and it's your state revolving loan fund. It's very strange when a loan is considered also a grant, but the state requires that. So it's less of an internal control than a, we had to write it up because it was missing. So I think there are been very strengthened controls over that process of getting a clean grant schedule. This is our, was our final year on the audit. We, I did want to thank you for being our partner for so many years. It's been a pleasure to work with your whole team. Logan and her crew have been amazing. I think Logan's really stepped into that role to strengthen the internal controls, to improve processes where she can, and to really make it a much more tightly running ship. So but pretty much my presentation, unless you had any specific questions, I think it's definitely the right direction, and we've seen a lot of really good improvement.
Seeing none, I entertain a motion to accept the audit.
Motion to approve.
On the floor in a second, is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And again, Ms. Shuping, we want to thank you for this year's audit. We also want to thank CRI for the many years of service to the city of Palaca, going over and beyond the call of duty and working closely with this organization. And we just thank you again, and we're you're going to be missed around here. And we're just going to kind of move forward. And we also want to thank Ms. Becker and the finance team, along with every department head and every staff person who's worked closely with this, as well as Mr. Holmes for the work that you've done on this year's report. So again, we just want to thank you all.
Thank you. And we're just a phone call or email away. Logan's, Logan's got all my information. We're happy to help the transition in any way we can. Thank you.
Becker, you got anything?
No, sir, I don't. I just want to thank CRI for the partnership. I appreciate all the support.
And again, thank you for your long hours on working on this, along with your staff.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next up, moving to the consent agenda, item four. Item four is our consent agenda. We've got three items on the consent agenda. I'll go ahead and read them just because we've got such a short agenda. So adopt resolution number 2020 R-83, authorized execution of a contract for $2,385,028, a deductive change order for negative $499,886.87 for CDBG Dr. 14th and 15th Street Drainage to DB Civil Construction LLC for a total project cost of $1.827 million. B is about resolution to authorize execution of an agreement with Hanson Professional Services for Lift Station number 16, project for an amount not to exceed $80,788. And C, adopt resolution 2020 R-85, authorized execution of an easement agreement with Putnam County School Board at Kelly Smith for Lift Station number 27.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We received a question in the chat line regarding C. So could we remove that from the consent agenda for a brief discussion?
Are there any other items on the consent agenda that we wish to have removed at this time? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Motion to sub items A and B.
On the A and B, by Commissioner McCaskill, a second by Commissioner Borum. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item C, execution of an easement agreement with Putnam County School Board at Kelly Smith for Lift Station number 27. What's the question you see, Mr. Holmes?
Question is from Ms. Kitchens, who asked about whether or not it would be necessary for three members of the board to recuse themselves since they work with the school system. I just wanted Jonathan, who's on the lane. I apologize, I don't know why. Jonathan, to explain that that easement is for our benefit. Jonathan, could you briefly explain what that easement is for?
Yes, sir. Can you confirm that you can hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, this easement is for lift station, the lift station which primarily serves Kelly Smith Elementary School. As you're aware, that station is getting an upgrade with backup power courtesy of FEMA funding. It came to our attention as we were going through the permitting process that we did not have site control documentation. So we reached out to the school board. And this is the easement agreement that you have before you.
So basically, the easement is for the city's benefit in, in being able to, to document its license to operate on the grounds where the lift station is located. From, I'll defer to the city attorney, but from my perspective, I, I don't see a conflict with three members of the board.
Going to ask counsel, I was going to ask counsel if she was okay with the city attorney's legal ver, legal rendition and interpretation. She's on, you're muted. We can't hear you. You're unmuted.
Okay. Good evening. In order to have a conflict of interest, each of the commissioners would have to have some kind of personal interest. And I don't see a personal interest in a lift station, an easement for a lift station. So I don't see the conflict of interest. And yes, we can proceed with the item.
I just wanted to give the city manager a hard time and make sure he, his heart from the change his hats.
Appreciate that very much. Happy to defer also.
I guess I'm making a little more use of us to do except C, second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you to all the warriors in the room. Moving on to public hearing, a public hearing is under item five, A is it's our public hearing for our trim calendar fiscal year 2020-21 proposed budget and millet for 2020 and 2021 through 2021 at 6.4 mils proposed. One second, you can go ahead and read the resolution. And I will get the truth of the village statement.
Yes, sir. A resolution of the city commission of the city of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, adopting the proposed tentative operating mileage rate for the purpose of levying of adware taxes for the city of Palaca County for fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
So move.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Just for the record, truth of millet statement for fiscal year 2020-21, prior to the adoption of the resolution, which sets the property tax millet rate, chapter 200.065 for N4, for N D, Florida statutes requires that the following statement be publicly announced. The tax authority leveraging, levying this property tax is the city of commission of the city of Palaca. The rollback rate is 5.4818 mils per $1,000 of assessed value. The percentage increase is 16.75% higher than the rollback millet rate. The operating millet rate to be levied is 6.4000 mils per $1,000 of assessed value. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? The numbers 386-329-0100, or you can enter the chat function. Anyone in the chat?
Not at this time, Mayor.
We'll go ahead and close our public hearing at this time. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Questions called by Commissioner Borum. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B. Well, item.
Yes, sir.
Item two, adopt, is adopting resolution 2020 R-87, adopting proposed fiscal year 2021 budget.
A resolution of the city of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2020 to 2021, providing for severability and providing
So move. Second.
On the floor in a second. Ms. Logan, do you have another fancy video for us today?
Not today, sir.
We're now for the fourth public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Again, the number is 386-329-0100, or you can enter your comments in the chat. Is there any information in the chat?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Seeing nothing in the chat, the phones aren't ringing. We'll go ahead and close public hearing. Questions called by Commissioner Borum again. All in favor, say aye.
That wasn't, that wasn't me.
What do you, that was Campbell?
Campbell, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. Questions called by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Y'all got to forgive me, gentlemen. I'm almost 50. Lot easier when we're in person to figure out who's saying it. All right, moving on to item number six. Portion is 20-05, amending appendix A fee schedule of the municipal code of the city of Palaca as it pertains to fees and other charges related to chapter 66, solid waste, garbage containers, chapter 86 utilities, providing for severability and provided an effective date, first reading.
An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, amending appendix A fee schedule, municipal code of the city of Palaca as it pertains to fees and other charges relating to chapter 66, solid waste, garbage containers, chapter 86 utilities, and providing for severability and providing for an effective
I got a question. It's just the the things you read, we both known, or we not changing anything else in our fee schedule, same thing. Y'all gave us 50 and I was surprised that I'm like, how many?
We need.
We just went in the trash of garbage stuff.
We can get an update.
Mr. Griffin, do you want to go ahead and give a summary?
Comment from, would it be our public work director?
I can speak to it. It's, there is some verbiage change that Mr. Griffiths can speak to. However, as far as the rates go, it's your sanitation rate.
Can you hear me?
And sewer rate that we discussed in the budget workshop. Nothing has changed since the budget workshop that we discussed.
So, Mr. Griffin, do you want to add anything? Mr. Griffin? Some technical difficulties. Did I answer your question, Commissioner?
Oh, I'm, I'm good. I mean, if, I mean, if it was the same. I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
I was asking Vice Mayor, I was asking Vice Mayor Brown, she kind of nodded, yes, but anything else that satisfies everybody for the commission? Yes, Mr. Griffin, I don't know if you're, you've been able to get back on. But I think that covers it. So we can move forward. It's the same things that we discussed during the budget workshop. And I think the, the sentiment is, is pretty much the same. One of the things I just want us to be conscious of, I want to give Mr. Griffith some kudos. I, I think what happens is we, we, we've got some citizens who find themselves, particularly with the pandemic being in positions where they are, you know, cash strapped as it relates to dealing with some of the issues. They don't have the same operational budget as before. They're seeing their revenues go down. And I personally watched Jonathan Griffin work with one of the local businesses and, you know, and try to find ways in which to save them some money as they called in and provide, you know, what I thought was excellent customer service in going out, looking at what they're doing, talking to them about the operation and figuring out there's a way to save them any dollars. And I think that's what our job is. Our job is to find ways to save dollars, to create efficiencies, and also to be able to help our local business owners whenever possible within the confines of what we've got in place. And so I, I just want to give him a thank you on that. I know that a lot of times folks will complain about the rates that they have on some of these pro- on these properties, particularly with dumpsters and things of that nature, but if we just continue, I think, to make the extra effort to explain what's going on and what type of services they're getting, we'll, we'll be in a better position. And hopefully, we'll be in, we'll be in a position in the near future where we can actually pass savings, additional savings on as we begin to spread out these services to extended areas. And so that's one of the goals that we have in place. So with that in place, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second. So motion on the floor in a second. We'll now open the floor up for public hearing. Is there any public hearing on this matter? Again, the number's three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, or you can enter it in the chat. Ms. Robinson, do we have anything in the chat?
Nothing in the chat, sir.
Phones aren't ringing. We'll close public hearing. At this time, were there any discussion from the commission?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us into item seven, which is our city manager and administrative reports. Mr. Holmes? You've had a busy couple of weeks.
Yes, we have. Mr. Mayor, thank you. And, and I've sent an email to all of you and I'll try to address the topics that I've got as quickly as I can. First topic is, uh, the topic of moving forward with some of the scheduled larger events that traditionally occurred during the holiday season. The first one we've got scheduled is Boo on the Avenues, which, as you know, is in conjunction often with truck or, and treat.
Truck treat.
I'm sorry.
Truck or treat.
Truck or treat. That's the first event that we would have on our agenda. The next event would be the Christmas parade. We, uh, we've had inquiries from citizens that normally sponsors or facilitates that, the truck, the, uh, the Bill on the Avenue event, asking about the city's position on granting a permit. As you know, we're in phase two reopening under the CDC guidelines, which limits crowds to fifty and mandates social distancing and masking where that's not possible. But at the same time, the public is seeing sporting events, basketball, baseball, football, college football games, and wondering why that's allowed if we're not allowed to participate in events such as, such as Bill on the Avenue. So as I indicated to all of you in discussion in our weekly COVID briefing with the EOC, asked the health department if they had any particular guidance and understandably, they, they really couldn't say much other than if we were going to do it, they would suggest that we try to maintain social distancing and enforce a mask requirement and have sanitation stations, none of which are far, are probably very practical. Mr. Bowlin from the school district did mention that they, he thinks the football game concept is a little bit different in that they're able to restrict attendance based upon gated admission. They require masks as a condition of entry, and they haven't able to put visual cues or markers at some of the facilities that normally attract the concentrations of crowds such as bathrooms and concession stands, giving the public a cue as to how far apart they should stay. So I guess that, and, and, and I agree with his, his thoughts that there might be a little bit more ability on the part of the school district to control the crowd in a, in a limited mission event such as a football game as compared to Bill on the Avenue where last year, I think it was our combined opinion, Mr. Cutright myself, that there were probably seven hundred fifty to a thousand people at Bill on the Avenues. It's not a controlled access point. You have people basically walking down the streets and making, you know, entries into various stores to, to see what the bigger store might be offering by way of, of treats. But before we took a decision, because we know that you're the ones that are going to get the phone calls, before we made a decision, because we know that you're the ones that are going to be getting the phone calls, we wanted to, or I wanted to bring it up for discussion and see if anyone had any strong feelings about it.
Well, I don't have a strong feeling about it per se. I mean, I guess we're, we're still in phase two. It's our ultimate responsibility to make sure that we protect the public health and safety. And I wouldn't want to put anybody at risk. Again, there are other organizations, per se, the school board and other entities that can control their space. And we just, I don't, again, the write-up was good that you wrote up, um, city manager, that was a good write-up. And I really, I'm just in line with whatever you wrote up and looking, you know, just trying to protect the health and safety of, of our citizens. That's all I have.
Yeah, Commissioner.
I'm in agreement with, totally with Commissioner Borum.
Commissioner McCaskill, Commissioner Brown, Vice Mayor Brown.
No comments at this time, mayor.
Scratching her head. She's talking about mute, unmuting. She's coming.
Well, I think it would depend on where the pandemic is, and if it's like it is now, I wouldn't want to put anybody in jeopardy. We've had enough people sick and enough people dying in this county. And safety is, to, to me, is more important.
I, I think, um, I think the one thing that the city has done, it's maybe a little different than what's been done in other places throughout the state of Florida, is really go beyond, as it relates to consciousness of health inside our, our city. We're, we're unique in a lot of ways as it relates to health, particularly with some of the challenges that we've had historically, looking at our health rankings and the number of people who are predisposed. I do think that if we look at the numbers, the numbers are, depends on what day you look at it, it looks like we are trending down and then we get hit with a day that says something different. Last Friday, they started high school football games. We just started school back. I wouldn't be opposed to either at the early October meeting or the September twenty-fourth meeting, looking at where we are, if we phased the diff- if we've hit an additional phase or some restrictions have been taken off, looking at the possibility of limiting capacity for these events or, because typically, I think seven fifty is even a mild number. You're talking thousands of kids who come downtown. Many are under two, and masking is virtually impossible. I would be more in favor of the parade because it doesn't call for a lot of interaction with, with the people. And we may be able to control some spacing a little better at a parade as opposed to what we can do with an event like trunk or treat or even with Boo on the Avenue. We may find ourselves in a situation where we become creative like Powell did with their school pack, backpack giveaway, where we actually have prepackaged bags that kids can pick up and, and go from there. And that may be a way that we deal with it, getting the sponsors all together, just to package up some bags of goodies to give to the kids or, or do something differently and try to see how we can do something from a creative standpoint. But it, I, with all of it, it's still difficult. And the biggest thing that we've got to do is make sure that we protect our children as much as we protect our citizens, but our, but our, our babies are precious. And some, they can't protect themselves in the same ways that adults do. And, you know, while this year, it's, I told someone, I said, it seems like we want to just ask somebody, can we skip these last three months and just go into 2021? Because 2020 has just been horrific. We want to find a similar to normal, but we don't want to do that at the expense of risking someone's health. And so that's, that's my position. I stand firmly on the idea of us being creative in what we can do to create some activities for our young people that can promote social distancing. I think Mr. Cutright is doing a, a great job of trying to do those things. But I also think that we've got to make sure that we are on the side of caution. Mr. Cutright, you have anything?
No, I think the, the city manager, Mr. Holmes, and, and everybody on the commission kind of like really said exactly what I've been thinking. I know we need to find some way of trying to reopen in the city, but we also got to err on the caution of safety for the, the citizens. And trust me, I want to get everybody back out doing normal things, but we have to take time and be patient and eventually a cure or antidote or something will come out to where we can kind of go back to normal. But right now, we just got to follow the CDC guidelines the best we can and, and be creative around other things that we can do to kind of minimize the exposure, but also give us some type of normacy. I'm, I'm in tune with everything that everybody just said, so that's all I can say.
Mayor, I'd like to say, I think you brought up a very valid point when you said becoming creative with how we do it. And I think the way that Powell did the backpack giveaway was a prime example of one of the best steps that we possibly could take to ensure that we do have interaction and to ensure that something happens. So I do think that's one of the, one of the top things, if we are to go for it, that we look into that to see if that's a value option and just try to find a venue that will house enough people or have enough space that we'll be able to space out to prepackage the candy. But then again, you have to be cautious with that as well for those that may have whatever allergies that peanut allergies or things like that. So there are some other things to take in consideration with that, but I do think that was a great option of what you all came up with.
I, I, I think we're all saying the same thing. And I, I think before we drop the hammer completely on saying no, what we're going to do is say no with the belief that if somebody comes up with something that's logical and safe, we'll, we'll look, we'll think about it. We'll at least bring it back to the commission by the first meeting in, in, in October.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll respond to the individual that had contacted me and, uh, and convey that that may be watching now. And then we'll all also try to talk about this in between now and then and see if there's anything we can suggest as a sort of a spinoff from what was done with the trunk or treat. So we'll bring something back to you next month or next meeting.
It may be an opportunity for us to creatively try to create some points of distribution and maybe get Chief and Powell to kind of tie the two in together so that we don't create the, the same level of exposure and maybe break it up into different times. So we limit the, the ages. So, um, and then maybe just a
Mayor. Just on behalf of, for Powell, I know we're, we're looking at different ways to where we can safely provide activities for our youth. And I think the next thing that's coming up and that we began discussing was trunk or treat. My question is, if we do come up with a safe plan that we would like to present, would you like us to wait to present it in the next meeting? Would you like us to present it to the city manager? So then we can bring it forward.
Yeah, I, I think that it would sit with the city manager and council first. We'll put us in a better position. We can put him on the hot seat. And, uh, but no, I think in all seriousness, I think it's just something that we vet. And it gives us all an opportunity to kind of think through it and then make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. And can they get the city manager? He's going to take it to the health department to see if they got any aches about it, I'm pretty sure. And also, you know, it'll go through, it'll go through our public safety team as well. So I think that should be, you know, with all these great minds on this Zoom, I'm sure you guys can come up with something.
Thank you.
You may be giving out candy coupons.
We will, we'll definitely see if we can brainstorm it and see if we can come up with something that might be plausible. So thank you for that. Next, very briefly, just wanted to give you some good news and kind of give us a, a shout out to Andy Hertz from the, at the golf course. Those of you who've been on the commission for a while, remember when the golf course was a huge money drain. I remember when the city was budgeting in excess of $300,000 a year to try to shore up the golf course. For the second year in a row, Andy has not only broken even, but he's actually paid the city back some from, on the lease that we, we negotiated four years ago. So just one of those success stories where saving 300,000 a year is the same in many ways as, as getting an additional 300,000 a year. And I just want to give Andy a shout out for what, what I think all of us at City Hall and management, and I know those of you on the commission who are, who are aware of what Andy's done out there, I, I think give him a shout out for a job well done and in getting the golf course up to speed and, and operating it efficiently so that it doesn't now require general fund infusion to, to keep the, the operation moving. I'll stop for a second if any of you have comments.
Eighty-eight thousand.
Sir?
Three hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
That was.
That's a, that's about a $400,000 turnaround.
Absolutely. It's a kudos. We, that was one of my big pet peeve things as it related to when I first came on the board, the, the drain that the golf course had on the city's general fund. And back in 2017, again, when they, when there were some big things on the table as it relates to whether we were going to stay with them, sell it, sell the golf course or do whatever. Some creative ideas came about and was able to strike a, a deal and agreement. Andy took the challenge and grateful and thankful that he did. And it has served the community well. It has improved the financial position of, of the city. And we, we look forward for that continued relationship. And I'm also looking forward to 2023 when we finish off that. when we finish off that a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar debt service or whatever, and we'll be that much further ahead as it relates to additional funding from that venue. So that's all I have. And again, I'm very pleased that, you know, to be part of that savings. That's all I have.
If no one else has anything on that item, I'll just mention to you that as all of you are aware, I believe the county is distributing CARES money, CARES Act money to Buttonham County residents. Their initial avenue of distribution was in a business grant to those businesses who had been affected by, by COVID. They had originally, I think, a portion, three thousand dollars per business for, per qualifying business. I think they raised that to four thousand dollars in the last week, and they also allowed nonprofits to be eligible for receipt of funds. But as of last week, I know that they did not have a huge amount or number of applications for those funds. So since we have about six hundred businesses in the city of Palaca that we send business tax bills to, we know theoretically there's about six hundred businesses who, who get business tax bills. We went ahead and, and sent a notice, incorporated a notice in our water bill that simply highlights the fact that they may, all businesses may be, may be eligible for CARES Act funding. We gave the website, the county website, where there's an online application as well as a Google prompt to the site in the hopes that maybe if there are businesses out there in the city who haven't heard about the program or for whatever reason had not remembered that they could apply, that will prompt them to, to apply. That was at no cost to the city. I was able to get with Miss Atkins from the gas authority, and we were able to get with the people that print the bills and they agreed to do a one inch by three inch notice for no charge and, and ready. I'll mention that that was a, a, a citizen had contacted me and asked about whether we could do something to maybe highlight the availability of funds. And the citizen actually said, asked if we could do anything with the water bill. And then, and that, that led to discussions with Ann and that led to that having, that, that taking place. So if you hear about that from any of your, your business constituents, it's a prompt to the county's website and then, you know, the online application is there. And if the business qualifies, then I'm sure the county is eager to distribute funds to qualifying businesses. I, I think, you know, they've maybe been even, I think maybe they've been a little bit surprised at the low number of applications they've gotten. Again, I'll stop in case anybody has a comment or a question on that.
That deadline was extended to September twenty-third. And they also, they also made it available to nonprofits as well, which is, which was a little different from before.
Definitely was. So that would, that would include churches, by the way. So, you know, the word, get the word out if you have a, have an ability to, and as I said, it's going out on the water bill. And then finally, make, mention the fact that we have completed and gotten sign off on a job description for the fire chief. Ms. Robinson has worked very well with, with Ms. Thomas and, and that, and also soliciting input from J R Grimes, the current chief and, and a couple of other governmental entities. We'll be posting that out next week, soliciting applications. Once we've done that, then we'll start the process of, of narrowing the application list down and with the ultimate result that, you know, I come to you with a recommendation. So that process will be ongoing and in the interim, we'll be, we'll be naming an interim chief. I've met with as of tomorrow, I will have met with every lieutenant and captain at the fire department. I think next week I'm meeting with the administrative assistant at the fire department before we name an interim chief. And then finally, I said finally once already, I've been known to do that before, but finally, finally, we had reason to look at our code enforcement board composition. And I'm advised after that review that we are in need of some new members because we have people who have turned out. As a matter of fact, I think we only have two members who are serving a current term other than the alternates. So if there are any of you who have any knowledge of any, any people within the city who are willing to serve on our code board, then we, we would welcome your, your input, your encouragement to them or, or maybe even, you know, your suggestion that they be, they be appointed. So we're trying to fire that code enforcement process back up and we are, are going to need a functioning code board because we do plan for them to be busy in the coming months. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments from the commission? If not, thank you, Mr. Holmes. We know that's just a, just a, a, a micro, a, a micro fraction of what you're actually been dealing with over the last few weeks. And so we're just glad to to, to see that we're moving things forward. We'll go into our department reports. Chief Grimes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just let you know that we did have a successful week at Palaca High School last week teaching our Fire One students. So that program is up and running and I think that's about all I had. And I'd just like to say this is my last commission meeting and thank you for everything you guys have done for me.
You got a commendation of one of your, one of your officers who showed some excellent skill during an accident?
Yeah, we had a, a, a very bad accident out on Highway one hundred last week. Thankfully, all the folks had made it as far as best of my knowledge, but we got some real talented folks. Heavily entrapped victims, they were able to get them out. They worked about thirty minutes getting all the folks out. It was told to me that, you know, one of our, one of our members made a very surgical move to free a person's arm up out of a, out of a vehicle and he deserves accommodation for that. And that's was Lieutenant Philip Smith. He did it. They, they did a great job. They worked for a long time, real hard to get those folks out. So I'd like to recognize all those guys on that, on that day. That was the A shift crew at the fire department. They did, this did a fantastic job.
And just to avoid any confusion, when he says surgical move, JR, you might want to mention that it wasn't surgery on the.
No, 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 it wasn't surgery. It was just a real, real close cut that was, had to be taken very, very seriously. I didn't mean for it to act like surgery, but it was just a real, real ginger cut that he had to make to, to free the person's arm up.
Surgical, surgical precision on the cut of the vehicle.
I guess would have been a better term. I do apologize.
Again, I think it's just a testament to the training and the dedication of our, our guys at the fire department. And so you know, definitely we, we commend, we commend the department for the work that they're doing. Anything else, Chief?
No, sir. Thank you. I was trying to respond to Miss Sunny. She sent me something in the chat, but no, thank you so much.
Right. Miss Sunny? You have anything for us?
No, sir, not this time. Thank you.
Chief Shaw?
Yes, sir. Just want to mention that last week we put on a handgun safety class. It's a lot smaller in size than what we usually did. We only had fifteen members. We did it due to recognizing safety for COVID. It went over very well. I was very pleased with Captain Newcomin, uh, being able to perform that class to get it put on here at our range. Uh, again, just want to remind everyone that tomorrow we'll be having nine eleven ceremonies at the Board of County Commissions, which begins at ten o'clock AM. And that's all I have.
Hey, Chief, what, what are the, what are the things we have going on with social justice right now? Is there an opportunity for us to be able to do kind of a online know your rights seminar and let the officers be the ones to kind of give the, do the tutoring on that with the community?
I don't think it'd be a problem at all. That's part of what we do when we do our handgun safety class as well. We deliver that information. The class is divided up into two days. The first day is all classroom portion. The second day is actually a range, the range activities. So no, I don't think it would be a problem at all. I think we can sit down and put something together and then be able to provide that information or that, that conversation back and forth to be able to deliver information to the public.
Probably partner with the, the local bar association or someone as well, and maybe the state attorney's office to help us with that. I've seen it. I participated in a couple of those. I think it'd be something good for us. Mr. Cutwright. Mr. Cutwright, we will. We'll move. I hear you.
Yeah, I just want to add that on the twenty-third of this month, that we are doing a partnership with Pal, the local police department, also the Pastor Jay, the Family Life Center Church and La Farra Davis at doing a food drop at the church from nine to about twelve thirty. Please come by and enjoy and help commissioners, those that in need, if you have circumstances that you need transportation, we're looking at trying to find a piece to that. It's not been confirmed, but share any ideas that you have with me and we'll try to get you some service if you need it. Other than that, we're just waiting on the city to get back to some type of norms. That's it.
Mr. Tucker, you have anything?
No, sir, not at this time. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Just want to share some positive news. One of our employees, Tremaine Watts, who was in a serious condition has improved. I believe they even called Ed to kind of check in and just chat a little bit. So some, some positive news there. Other than that, we'll have some significant updates towards the end of the month regarding some larger capital projects that are getting ready to start.
We can get update on the votes.
Sir, I, I can get you one by the next meeting.
Ms. Robinson?
No, sir. Mr. Griffiths and actually Mr. Holmes took what I had to talk about today, so we're good.
Let's talk about, Mr. Yule.
Nothing to report this time, sir. Thank you.
Robinson, we got any positions available?
Our chief planning director.
She's not getting paid but hour.
Can you hear me?
Okay, we'll move on to the commissioner this time. Vice Mayor. Commissioner McCaslin, can you unmute her?
Now you can hear me. All right. Can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay. I had asked to have some discussion about the revolving loan fund, but I brought you all some information I'd like for you to kind of look at before we do discussion. And so I'd like to have it put on our next agenda so that we'd have a little time to talk about it. I am pushing for us to do it because my day is a number that I want to see it started. I feel like once we get started, we're for y'all will take it to the finish line. So if that's all right. The other thing is I found out that Comcast had closed its doors. Do we have many other other businesses that just have closed? Where do people pay their Comcast bill? And, you know, do they just leave and not inform anybody they're going? Does anybody know?
I, I didn't know that they were actually closed. I thought maybe the doors were closed for COVID.
And I'm happy to see the new businesses that have opened in the last month. I, I hear that there may be some others coming. I'll be anxious to see that happen. And that means that our town is still viable and people see something in us and will keep coming. I have some more information. I'll be getting to you all about the revolving loan fund. And I hope the business incubator is going to be worked on too. This will be something that might help them and it would help some of the other businesses in the area.
The business incubator, we received the, we received the award letter for the feasibility grant. And so steps are continuing to be put forward to deal specifically with that.
May I want to say, I didn't know if anybody had said anything, but you got the hometown hero award from the Florida cities.
Got my pin on the day. I got my hometown hero pin, Home Rule Hero. Commissioner Campbell?
I have a question tonight, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Borum? McCaskill?
Just congratulations. I had no idea that you had received that award. So congratulations and nothing else at this time. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor. I'm sorry. Congratulations on that award.
I think, Ms. Brown, did you get Home Rule Hero this year as well? She always gets Home Rule Hero. She, she gets everything. And, and as we close out, I think where we are, I think one of the biggest things that we have right now is, is there've been a lot of tragedies in this community. We're still in the middle of a pandemic and I think people are continually looking to to really relax. But I, I, I think that there, I think we just continue, we have to continue to make the necessary precautions. We're starting to see more days where the numbers are trending down than we've seen in a long time. But we're still at approximately eighteen hundred and eighty-nine cases and approximately forty deaths. And, and so positive handheld, social distancing are still the things that we're looking at. As we continue to look at these experts and the information that they give us, we begin to question how people get categorized as experts because the information changes on a daily basis. We've seen six different standards through COVID. And it seems as though the information that we get is, is continually fluid. And so let's not be frustrated to the extent that we lose sight of, of what's going on. We're seeing people with lingering effects, which include inflammation of the heart and difficulty breathing and, and lung diseases, some of the things that we're seeing. But again, we're still six months into a situation that you need at least ten months before you can start to determine what long-term effects are going to be. And so I, I think if, as long as we're cautious about what we're putting in place, Mr. Cutright's reopening plan was excellent. I, I look forward to the opportunity for us to be able to engage in some of those programs where we actually start to provide some social distancing. And I think at the end of the day, it's going to take some leeway and just some trust. We'll be able to see what happens as a result of high school football starting over the next two weeks. We've had kids who've practiced baseball for the last few months and the results have been pretty good. I haven't really heard of any outbreaks as a result of kids playing baseball, which encourages me that baseball is a sport where you can somewhat socially distance quite differently than football or basketball. We've got a number of young people who've been playing basketball at the parks, but I, I think we have to continually open up things so that people can have some sense of normal relief as we move forward. And we just have to make sure we stress the precautions without putting anyone in a seriously dangerous situation. And I think creatively, that's where we've been. Aside from that, our community is moving forward. We're finding ourselves in a situation where businesses are still coming here. We've got individuals coming tomorrow to look at Palaca and the prospects of what this community brings. Palac is going to be the new hotbed for this area. And so we'll just continue to to stay the course as the gym of the St. John's continues, as it continues to be reshined even in a pandemic. Homes are being purchased at a record rate compared to. At a record rate compared to what we were seeing before and Palac is moving forward. Vice Mayor Brown is bringing programs to us in the middle of a pandemic and so. If if our thirty six year old, if our thirty six year veteran commissioner is excited about what the future brings, we should all be excited. I think as it uh overall, we're seeing Putnam County move forward. There are some things in this community that have us with the wall in between us, but that wall can easily be torn down. Um, and we just have to make sure that we find common ground in doing so. And so I'm excited about what the future brings. I'm excited about the energy and the work that's going on inside of the city. Even with a tight budget year and a lot of unknowns, we're still looking at ways in which we can improve this community. That we can better our business community and we can help our citizens grow because if we raise the floor, we can raise the ceiling. Those are my comments for today. If there's a motion to adjourn, um, we will do so. There's a motion quickly by Commissioner Campbell. We now stand adjourned.